Work tomorrow without a phone, like who does this? What happens? Like, how are people gonna call me?
How can people do this?
I'm like, am I gonna survive tomorrow? Needless to say, I did survive. Everything was fine.
Fire is a nice recipe.
Yeah, I was like, and then when it came on, I was like, oh.
Oh darn.
Okay. Well, I don't know if that was as good as I thought it was gonna be. Then I had to remember all my passwords to everything. I should probably write those down. Next time.
Okay. All right, it is one o'clock, Tuesday, December 3rd. Time for our regularly scheduled meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
At this time, it is Commissioner Enrich to do the pledge and incation. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you pray? Father, we come to this day, we are so grateful to be gathered here, and we are thankful for all that you've done for us, not only this year, but that you continue to do for us as a community. We ask for your divine protection over our first responders, and we are so grateful for the way in which they take care of us. Father, thank you for continuing to bless our city and help us to remember to bless others, not only in our cities, but the cities around us, so that we all may prosper. And today, Father, we are so grateful for all that you're doing in this season, and ask us to remember, Father, those who are less fortunate. We give you glory and honor, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, item four, which is the approval of the minutes of the last regular meeting, which, if there are no corrections, will stand approved. Okay. Moving on, go public comment. Item five, at this time, if anybody wishes to come to the podium, please state your name. We'll give you five minutes for discussion on any item that is not on the agenda for today. Seeing no one come up.
The guy's here.
Okay, so just so everybody's aware, we'll go ahead and we're gonna jump down to item 12A for the sake of travel for an individual that's here. So, item 12A, Matt?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the release of a request for proposal for workforce housing. Daniel?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. One of the city commission's goals is to build 4,000 housing units by 2030. The city continues to work with developers to utilize various federal and state programs to help spur housing development such as the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Housing Programs, reinvestment housing incentive districts, or RHAD, moderate income housing, or MIH, and Kansas Housing Investment Tax Credits. The request for proposal being presented this afternoon aligns with the Low Income Tax Credit Program, or LIHTC, process for 2025, and would add to the number of tools used to help address housing needs within the community. This program helps create options for affordable housing and provides options for renters making between 30 and 80% of area median income, depending on the specific project. This program is administered by the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, and you have two alternatives before you want. The governing body may authorize the release of the RFP and identify a city commissioner to participate on the selection committee, or two, the governing body may not authorize the release of the request for proposal. Staff recommends alternative one. There is no fiscal impact with releasing this. We do have a developer who specializes in LIHTC projects that is here. If you do have specific questions that you would like to ask him, I know he would be happy to answer those. I would also be happy to help answer any questions related to the RFP as well.
Jeff, if you've got any comments that you wanna share, since you flew in and are flying out.
Yeah, thank you for moving me out of the agenda. I really appreciate that. I gotta catch that three o'clock flight. My name's Jeff Beckler, I'm with Zimmerman Properties, I'm VP of Development for the Midwest region. Just wanted to introduce myself and say that Zimmerman's very interested in this RFP and plans on applying for this RFP. We develop, we probably have 25 developments in the state of Kansas. I've had several conversations with Lana over economic development, very positive, excuse me, sorry, positive discussions thus far. City staff has been great. I just, I really just wanted to be here and introduce myself and Zimmerman, and thank you all for the consideration of this RFP. I'm excited to apply for it. We do have some land in mind, and we're working with that seller. I feel very confident that we can get that under contract. It is a process, it's a pre-application process, that's why we have that January 7th date in there. I believe the pre-application goes in January 10th. So that's kind of why those dates align right there. And again, any questions that you guys have, I don't want to take up too much of your time, I really just wanted to get in front of you and just tell everyone thank you for the opportunity. Workforce housing is very important, it's a great program, there's a lot of misconceptions about it. It's not Section 8 housing, it's truly workforce housing. We do it in 14 states now, family-owned groups, so again, I'll quit rambling. If you guys have any questions, I'm just excited for the opportunity.
Can you talk about the makeup of the developments that you're doing, especially the ones in Kansas, like our single-family, multifamily? Can you talk a little bit about the makeup of those developments? And if you'd mentioned a couple of cities where they're at, I think that would be...
Sure. Yeah, the makeup, our kind of sweet spot is multifamily, two and three stories, you know, we have going bigger than that. Generally, in Kansas, our developments tend to be in that 48 to 60 unit. That kind of is dictated by the housing agency in Topeka. We have developments outside Kansas City, Kansas, Mays. Oh man, you put me on the spot.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't know if we'd be the furthest west you'd ever been, or...
Definitely the furthest west.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think Hutchinson, man, I'm really drawing a blank, I apologize. But yeah, this would be the furthest west that we would do.
I appreciate that.
My second time being in town, and I love your community, and I really think it would be a great fit, I really do.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Mayor, I move that we authorize the release of the request for proposal to identify a city commissioner to participate in the selection committee for this. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion?
Do you have to name the city commissioner?
Would anybody like to volunteer?
I would like to volunteer.
I missed the opportunity to kind of get with you guys on who wanted to, but you're all okay with having...
That works.
I recommend Tom. Do that. Okay. Commissioner Nguyen.
Okay, we'll add in Commissioner Nguyen to that motion.
Second.
Okay, so any other further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you, Jeff. Travel safe.
Yep. Thanks.
All right, Mayor, if we want to return to item 6A, it's that time of year where we're pleased to recognize our employees who've reached years of service milestones. And Mayor, if you'll join me up front, we'll grab a microphone and invite up one by one our years of service, those employees getting recognized. Okay, 10 years of service. We have Josh Delhan, firefighter with Garden City Fire Department. Josh is celebrating 10 years of service in 2024 with the city of Garden City. Not in attendance today, but also celebrating 10 years of service with the city of Garden City and the Garden City Police Department is Chris Seaman. So let's give him a round of applause. Celebrating 10 years of service, he's with the street department, signals and traffic technician, Gilberto Andrade. Gilberto, congratulations. Celebrating 20 years of service with the Garden City Fire Department and our chief, John Ursick. Not able to join us today, but also celebrating 20 years of service, Donna Wooler, administrative assistant with Lee Richardson Zoo. Let's give Donna a round of applause. Celebrating 20 years of service with the electric department, Brett Harmon. Celebrating 20 years of service between the city of Garden City and the Recreation Commission, Jared Rudy. And our final employee, we were able to recognize him earlier this year at a League of Kansas Municipalities event that was really special. He's not here? Okay. But it was a big deal in Wichita, a nice celebration of Bob Zunt achieving 40 years of service milestone. So congratulations to Bob, congratulations to all the employees who reached years of service milestone. I do believe Jamie's going to want to capture all of you together for a picture across the hall, if memory serves me correctly, is that right, Jamie? Okay, so if all of our years of service needs that were here today, if you can join Jamie across the hall for a picture, thank you and congratulations, we're really proud of y'all. Mayor and Commissioners, item 6B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from the Garden City Parks and Recreation Department to waive the sign ordinance and right-of-way restrictions to have a banner placed on the Fleming Street and Mary Street fence and 3rd Street and Kansas Avenue from December 3rd through 7th, 2024, for the Rudolph Run 5K and 1-mile fun run.
May I move the request as presented?
Aye, second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Item 6C, the governing body is asked to consider and retroactively approve allowing the mayor to proclaim Saturday, November 30th, 2024, as Katie Guthrie Day in Garden City, Kansas.
Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the proclamation as presented. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? I would just like to mention that she was very surprised and was appreciative of everybody putting that together, so what wonderful words that were spoken of her that day, and she really enjoyed it. So thanks for everyone putting that together, so. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass. Yay, we don't have to do it again.
Reported the city manager, there's a couple of staff reports from the Garden City Police Department and the Service and Finance Department. If you have any questions or comments regarding those, now'd be the time to bring those up. If not, item eight, meeting is of note. Those requiring RSVPs, please get with the city clerk's office, and they'll take care of those for you. I think we're ready for 9A. If approved, the appropriate motion would be appropriation, approval of appropriation ordinance number 2576-2024A.
Mayor, I move that we approve appropriation ordinance number 2576-2024A. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Mayor Ortiz is stepping down for item 11A. I will kind of alert the commissioner, and if a staff member can maybe watch the clock and stay close to retrieve Commissioner Ortiz, if this happens to go until 1:30, we do have a 1:30 public hearing, we need to stop consideration of this item, go and take care of the 1:30 public hearing, which is on 12B, and then we can come back to 11A, the old business item. Okay, old business, item 11A, the governing body is asked to consider proposals for a temporary location for the Garden City Police Department. Chief.
The governing body is asked to consider proposals for a temporary location for the Garden City Police Department. At the November 19th, 2024 city commission meeting, the governing body considered two proposals regarding temporary facilities for the Garden City Police Department. During that meeting, staff was directed to provide additional information related to the costs associated with both proposals, and to identify city-owned property that may also be considered in the decision-making process. An updated cost analysis is attached, includes more detailed information regarding some of the known large-scale improvements that would need to be completed additionally. The add-on items that Mr. Greenlee shared with the governing body are now included in the cost projection, along with some of the assumptions regarding the buildup, I'm sorry, the buildup of that facility. Finally, there is one city-owned parcel that could be considered as an alternative location to the reconstruction. The property located on Jenny Barker has been identified as the anticipated Premier Homes campus. The most recent layout of that property is attached. If the governing body decides to move forward with one of the proposals, the next step would be to draft agreements to purchase the selected property, and depending on the proposal chosen, either solicit design, engineering, and construction contractor services on the Wharton proposal, or draft a commercial construction contracting agreement with detailed final cost for the Premier Homes proposal. Alternatives you have before you, number one, the governing body may approve the proposal from Premier Homes and direct staff to draft an agreement to purchase the property in a commercial construction contract agreement for review and consideration at a future meeting. Number two, the governing body may approve the proposal from Wharton's LLC and direct staff to draft an agreement to purchase the property and proceed with selecting design, engineering, and construction contracting services. Number three, the governing body may direct staff to proceed with the Premier Homes design on the Jenny Barker roadside and draft a commercial construction contract agreement for review and consideration at a future meeting. And number four, the governing body may deny both proposals and provide, actually deny all proposals and provide further recommendations. Staff has no recommendation. The fiscal note depends on the selected proposal. There is $100,000 included in the 2025 budget for this project, as well as $639,694 in the reserve fund. This alone will not be sufficient to finance the project. Staff will look at utilizing general obligation bonds, either long-term or temporary, to finance the remainder of the project. There will be, there will be an AM annual budgetary line, item savings of approximately $200,000 that can be dedicated to debt service on issuing temporary notes and/or general obligation bonds. At the conclusion of the use of the building, the city would have the option to sell the building, satisfy the outstanding loan principal, and to a varying degree, based on the markability of the proposal chosen, restore funding back to the general fund. There are several attachments, and I will stand for questions and have people ready to answer questions if you have any questions.
Commissioners, I'll call your attention to a couple of other items as well. On the bench, as you know, there was about five working days between the last meeting and this meeting, most of which, not all of the players involved in this project from a staff perspective, were present, at least at the same time to work. So between the getting the packet out and today, we have a couple of additional items that we think might address, or at least reshape, reshape the information you already have in a different way to help maybe address some questions that some of you brought up at the previous meeting. Those two items, one of them is a next step under each proposal, like what would we do next? And I think if, you know, the commission would, you know, choose one of these, we tried to outline, okay, what's the, what's the next, what's the next actionable item for the governing body? What would the staff be working on next to get us closer to constructing a facility or remodeling a facility, depending on the chosen, the chosen path? Also included is a spreadsheet that, and I'll try to tie some of this back to the agenda item, the fiscal note on this spreadsheet recognizes approximately 650, I think it says 639, and another 100,000. That's shown as an available funds number of approximately 750. That was obviously rounded. The $200,000 a year, we show a little bit differently. We show it as a $250,000 annual savings to the maintenance, what we would anticipate the maintenance line item budget to be, if not moving out of the LEC. So that's about the $300,000 a year minus the 50. But then we also build back in an expense that we started at 50, but we've subsequently upped a little bit more, just for unknowns, maintenance expenses or operating expenses of the building that we would be moving into over the course of several years. You can see this is built out for about 14 years. We don't know how long temporary is, right? So we basically exhausted the life of a taxable GO bond, 10-year taxable GO bond. We're showing an estimated principal and interest payment, that's based on a $5 million taxable 10-year note at 4%. That $5 million is based on not just the expenses for this building, but also remodel expenses related to 911, which will be an issue the commission takes up at a later date. We also show interest-only temporary notes, a couple rounds of those prior to a GO being issued. This was an attempt to show, like, when would we, over our current state, our current budgetary situation, when would we begin experiencing a shortfall that might require either some other one-time funding source, or in the absence of that, and all other things being equal, additional property tax liability? And so that's in that increased budget appropriation line. And then you'll see at the bottom, you know, this is where a lot of subjectivity comes into play. At the end of the life of this, would you sell the building? If so, what would you sell it for? That's indicated with an X here. I think that's different based on, your assumptions are gonna be different based on which of the two proposals you choose. Your assumptions are gonna be different based on your confidence in the market at the date it would sell, whether or not that would bring praised value, or something less, or something more. And we tried to take into account, okay, how much debt service would remain at the point you would sell it. So we gave three scenarios underneath. Interestingly, and again, there's so many variables based in this, and there's no adjustment for cost of money over time, but looking at this sort of straight-line analysis of it, the longer it goes, actually, the more financially beneficial a plan to move in temporarily to another facility is, the sooner it pays off the cost of the project, you know. You know, I looked at this and said, oh, what if we sold the building for 3.5 million? Or what if we sold the building for 2 million down the road? What would the net cost of the project be? And, you know, so those are the numbers I kind of built into X when I looked at it independently, to get a feel for where the finances of this project were at. But also, kind of to give you, you know, in 2029, I think 300,000 is approximately a mil, maybe a little less. That's the budgetary impact if all of this would fall with no other solution than to turn to the property tax mill levy.
Any questions for Matt or Chief?
Well, I'd hope that there was additional property, but I mean, the only property that was listed was the one, the campus. So my question on the campus now, I don't know if, I mean, Chief, you might know, if not, you can, you can move the question to somebody. Are there, are there already the improvements on the new, whatever the campus out there, on the Jenny Barker campus? Are there improvements already where you could actually, like, do you have water and sewer and electric already there? Or are we gonna have to do, or is that gonna be an additional expense where the location that currently up on, I don't even know what the street is, I can't remember now.
Labrador?
Labrador, yeah. Does that already have the improvements, and so it wouldn't be necessary?
There's existing, excuse me, Mayor and Commissioners, there's existing water and sanitary sewer, or water on Jenny Barker Road, sanitary sewer on the south side of all of that property. Electric pretty much surrounds it. So depending upon where in that big picture you would put this building, there could be some extensions required. But if it's put over in the southeast corner, there'd be minimal. That's what would be my answer.
And the only other thing on the Jenny Barker one is, we, we're not, why would, we wouldn't sell the building if it was on our campus? I mean, I don't anticipate selling the building, I mean, on that campus, I mean, unless we could use it for something else. Is that something that was considered, or no? Would you be able to use that building? Because it's gonna be on our new campus there, would that be something the building could be usable for, for someone else if?
I think we were charged to identify, and our interpretation was undeveloped, so we didn't bring back to you Dean Wiley Park or Fennepark to like build, we took, what property do we have that's undeveloped that's large enough? And so that's an undeveloped piece of property that's large enough. If you were to build on that campus, or build on that lot, that lot's huge, right? And, but the layout of the facility, which I think is included in the packet, yeah, you know, the commission would have some flexibility to place it in any of these spaces. This building that my, that I'm highlighting in the northeast, I'm not highlighting, I'm wiggling the mouse around, the is, was shown as a future city hall. I would say, in my opinion, if the commission chose this site, this is the site to build that building. I think long-term, it gives you the flexibility to sell that property. I don't know that it would be configured, it's not configured in this manner, I don't know that it would be, the building that we're talking about from the Premier Homes proposal is one that we would consider to be the design of a future city hall, should we need one. And that was, that was purely conceptual, there's been no direction by the governing body in the past to look for a new city hall. The, you know, the space serves us now adequately. If your question is, is there something that could move in there? The commission could direct something to move in there, but there isn't anything that's screaming for office space right now. There's definitely a need for the public works buildings identified on here, which is the fleet and the, you know, a new parks maintenance, a new street maintenance and what have you. So this is off in a corner, you could sell, you could sell that off in the, in the future if you, if you chose to do that.
I think although it's, it's an interesting direction that could bear a lot of fruit, I wonder, with the transparency of the RFP, I think the original direction of the commission didn't necessarily... didn't necessarily write it. It was broad, but it wouldn't write it to the idea of looking for contractors to construct. And I think to maintain and stay true with RFP, building on our parcel doesn't necessarily reveal our transparency. If that was an agenda that, that we could have come up like behind the scenes, so I don't necessarily think it's a wise idea to build on our own parcel.
No, I'd hope that we'd add some different additional parcels, but that, I mean, and since it's really not serving the purpose, and I don't think it could be retrofitted to be a city hall. So I'd hope that we had other property. I had no idea if we had other property, other places, but if we're going to own a building for 10 years, I'd hoped that we did. But if we didn't, yeah. And selling off this property when it took us so long to get it all and the costs that we paid, to me, I just, that would be, I don't think that'd be a wise decision, so.
Well, and if we were, yeah, I don't think placing something temporary, what, we keep calling it temporary, 10 years is not temporary, but putting in, I think we need to save, we've kind of got a plan for that area. I think it's not conducive to put something out there that doesn't fit that, that need or that plan. Any other questions? My thought process on this, I mean, we looked at temporary, we got, we got, again, like Commissioner Wynn said, it was a broad RFP. You know, this is something temporary, we're trying to move our, our staff out of a, a not very good situation temporarily to try to get them back in hopefully to the law enforcement center that will.
Oh, wow.
Sorry.
It was just mentioned that it is 130. We do have a 130 public hearing that we need to take up at this time for 12B. We'll wait for the mayor to come back in to sit at the bench.
Thank you.
And I'll try to remember my thought process when we get back to 11A.
We'll hold you to that.
And back, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're ready for 12, 12B. Mayor and Commissioners, this is a 130 public hearing on the matter of the governing body hearing questions, concerns, and comments from the public concerning the 2024 budget amendments that are necessary to reflect actual 2024 expenditures. Following the hearing, the governing body is asked to approve the certificate of amendment of the 2024 budget. Jared?
Due to changes in programs, cash carryover, and additional revenues, there is a need to amend the authorized budget for 2024. Proposal the following funds to amend and the justification for each. Following public comment, you'll have the alternatives of either approving the amending the budgets as shown on the 2024 amended budget certificate, or the governing body may not approve amending the budgets. If the budgets are not amended, the city may experience budget violations governed under KSA statute 79-2935. And staff's recommendation is that the governing body approve the 2024 amended budget certificate. And just as a reminder for Commissioners, if this is approved, all of you will need to sign the document today. Matt can step away and let you open the public hearing and have any commentary.
We'll now open the hearing. Any public comment is welcome if they want to come up, if they're here in the room or in the other room, they can make their way. Not seeing any, so give it a few seconds. I know there's a time lag on the feed back there, so. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any comments from Commissioners?
Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the amending the budgets shown on the 2024 amended budget certificate as presented. Wait a second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you. We're still going back to item.
12A.
Yeah, 12A.
Sorry.
Nope.
11A.
11A.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sessner?
Yeah, I have to remember. Yeah.
Your thought process?
So, yeah. So long-term, I think this was kind of a good, good swing at this process and event. You know, we're, we, last meeting, we moved to kind of deciding that we're going to probably purchase and build just because of the timeline, which we're not really for sure. I mean, it was brought up at the last meeting, we're not for sure where the county's going, but it's going to be a major project, which, so we're, we kind of came up with this round number of 10 years, maybe longer. But if we're going to house somebody, we'd probably need to, I mean, looking at the lease and everything, probably need to purchase and, and/or build. So just thinking through this process, I think from, from my standpoint, I'm not for sure about any others, so I'm giving you my point. I think we probably need to pull back, look at this a little closer. If we're going to look at building, I think we go out and find, find the right piece of property, design it to the specific needs of our law enforcement personnel for that longevity, because the community is growing and it will continue to grow. That department will probably need to expand during that, during that decade-plus-long process. So I would, I would like to see us probably step back, take another swing at this, look at probably designing and building on, on a piece of property that we would like to see where it would fit the best needs of our, of our law enforcement personnel and department. And that's just me, but that's, just thinking about this for the last, I mean, the proposals came in great for what we did for the RFP, but the longer I thought about this, and we, you know, we kind of say temporary, but, I mean, it's going to be a decade. That's, 10 years is a long time, and it might even be longer than that. So I want to make sure that we do this right, not only making the best decision, but for the longevity of how long our personnel will have to be at this location. And that we do have the possibility of expanding, if we do need to expand, for our law enforcement because of the, because of the growth of our, continued growth of our community, becoming a regional hub. Any, any other comments, or?
I think that's really understandable. I do have a question for Chief with that in mind. For both proposals, do you foresee them being adequate enough for growth of the department?
Wow.
Sorry.
Kind of apples to oranges a little bit.
Yes.
The Wharton's proposal has space, so there's space there. There's some limiting factors like parking and that other thing that we talked about before. So there's space there. The Premier Homes proposal, I think when we looked at the floor plan and kind of popped through some of that, we were looking at it through the lens of a temporary facility, so we didn't, we didn't look at it for longevity. We were looking at it through that, I guess, the hope and prayers that we would get back into the LEC at some point in time. So the, the space, I, there's space available. It just wasn't talked about when we were looking at it at first flat, so.
Well, and again, my perspective is, we say temporary, but 10 years is not temporary, and it might be longer than that, is the thing. And then we're always coming around to the end process, saying, well, how do we design it to meet, to either sell it or meet the needs, or it's always that big question mark at the end of what do we do with this? So I'm just saying, if we just, from my perspective, step back, look at this a little bit more. We are thinking about purchasing or building. I mean, you know, that's kind of how we were leaning last time it sounded like, from my perspective. I, I just feel that we could probably step back, take another swing at this, look at this a little more in depth on how, if we do build, how can we build to meet our needs? And make sure that we do this right for future commissions and, and for the community and for our law enforcement staff.
I want to acknowledge that. I mean, we realize there's a problem, there's been a problem in the building for many years, and so we finally made the decision, which was a hard one, to say, hey, we're not, we're no longer going to renew that lease with it. So that was a very hard decision because it could, you know, it put it, it made it feel, I think it was a hard one in the sense that how the county had counted on those dollars also. But the, I'm like you, I didn't anticipate, I was assuming this was a temporary, I thought two to three years. And then when I listened to the county's discussions on the, on the jail, how long luck's going to take, and then this idea of repairing that building, if it can be repaired, even after they get everybody out of that, so what does that look like? And so that's when it began to become a longer process. I didn't anticipate that. I thought we would get a lot more options as far as, you know, places that you could remodel or to do something with. And so, and I looked back to the RFP just, just a few moments ago, and again, it doesn't say that, you know, purchasing or building was, was not an option. It was very broad, and I think you did the best job you could with that. But I think now that we are talking about a longer-term building, I would rather see us do something that is not only honors you, but also honors our commitment to the public. And I'm, I'm like you, I hate prolonging this decision, but I mean, brushing into a decision that's a $5 to $6 million decision, and again, looking at the, a lot of the unknowns, and Matt did a really great job of telling, hey, we don't know about this, we don't know about that, because there's no way to know in the future. And then if we would have to raise the mill levy, especially with this being a tight budget year, so those are the, those kind of things that were really hard for me to say, hey, let's just pull the trigger and go with this and do these proposals. But I'm like you, I'd rather find a piece of property that's suitable, you know, and make sure that we build that, something that we want to keep for 10 years. And, and again, I'm, I'm hoping that they can move back in the law enforcement center. But again, I look at our community from, in the last 10 years, from 2014 to 2024, totally different.
I think it's really admirable to be prudent. I think it's very thoughtful, considerate. I do think I would want to caution and overprudence, because sometimes the desire to get something right causes us to delay taking action and in, and in action. We can be looking at it very with the devils in the details, because say we deny this and open another RFP, what are the, like, with the success rate of what we've gone with our last RFP, I, it's really difficult for me to foresee a more desirable, a more fitting place with what we've given. But also, I think, taking action is, I think that future commissions would be very sympathetic with us to recognize that with the timeline that we had and with the information that we had, that we made the best decision that we could. Yes, and I understand that there is the good fortune prudence, but also that there is a need right now. So with my consideration in mind, and with the information that we've been given with the cost analysis, I would like to move to approve the proposal for Premier Homes and direct staff to draft an agreement to purchase the property and a commercial construction contract agreement for review and consideration at a future meeting.
So Commissioner Engraff, do you have anything to say? I know that you haven't said anything, I'd really, before anything goes further, I'd really like to hear your thoughts on this. The hard thing for me is having the mayor have to step down. Had I known that including that, that parcel of land would cause him to step down, because I think this is what's really hard, not having our full commission be able to make this decision. So that's, that's one thing that's frustrating for me. I didn't realize that including that would, would exclude him, so.
So my biggest concern is the timeline on this entire thing. So with a delay out to another RFP, we're going to be pushing out. By that time, our contract at the LEC is going to be up, so we'll have to go and renegotiate with the county. I assume county will be willing to renegotiate, but there's always, it's the lawyer inside of me that is a little bit worried about the possibility that maybe if we don't get a new contract, or if it's not as good as what we currently have, so.
And I think the RFP would look also different. I know, I think we now know we want to purchase rather than remodel. So I think the RFP would look different.
Yes.
And again, I think you'd have a design and build or whatever with a, with a contractor, much like we've done with the airport, much like we've done with the fire station, or we've done the different, you know, projects around town, so. And we do have some very capable of those, so.
My other question for the other Commissioners as well, if we do go through with an RFP, if, say, perchance, this is the only option, is this an option you guys would be willing to go with, if this is the only thing we can get?
I mean, it doesn't, I mean, we can always come back and look at this item again, but, I mean, it's, it was presented. If it's the only option we have, which I don't think it, I mean, if, again, it's, I think we just need to step back, take a, take another look at this, get a little bit more information and broader view, and then make that decision. I don't think, I don't think, I mean, got a D personality, and, you know, I like to push, but just for me, on this, on this particular item, I want to, I want to get the best information, step back, make sure we're doing this right, because, again, like Commissioner Enrew said, I mean, in the last 10 years, look at our community, it's changed. The next couple of years, it's going to even grow and become bigger and change. So I just want to make sure we're meeting the needs of our law enforcement personnel in the right facility, in the right place in our community, that will suit, that will suit the city in the long run. Again, I mean, we're, we got that discussion last time of, you know, I, you know, when we walked into this thing, we were thinking, you know, temporary, you know, like three or four, five years max maybe. But again, listening to the county's discussion on this, it's going to, and this is where we were at, at the last meeting, it's going to be probably 10-plus years on if, depending on if they can get, get the law enforcement center remodeled. And that's, my view, thinking about this, and, and, you know, I've had people from the community coming to me and going and watching this, talking to me about, you guys keep saying temporary, but 10 years is not temporary. That's, that's a permanent location. So that got me to thinking a little bit more. I mean, it's, it was good proposals for the RFP that we got, but I think we need to step back and look at this a little closer. And again, it is a tight budget. It's $6 million, up to $6 million if you kind of play it out, in a, in a tight, another tight budget. So I just want to make sure we're making the right decision on this. And if, if it comes back to this option, I mean, we could, I mean, that's something that we'll have to hash out, I mean, from my standpoint, we would have to hash that out on the five of us making that decision. And I, you know, I like to thank staff for all their help and input over the, I mean, I know they've been kind of moving mountains to try to get us all the, and best information possible to help us make a decision on this. There is a motion on the floor, though.
Don't be selfish, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second unless the motion dies?
And there is no lack of second that I hear, so that motion did not pass. Further discussion?
So then, since it didn't get any support, what do you guys have in mind to direct staff? Or unless another motion, if the alternatives are made? Or unless another motion, if the alternatives are made?
I'm not sure how to, yeah, to.
Say what?
I'm trying to craft a motion to make it to her. So I'm wavering between the need, knowing that we need, I appreciate your comments on whether or not we can get, so I think that's important that, you know, that we could stay if we needed to. I'm, I think that we have a good enough working relationship with the county, and hopefully our, you know, city attorney can negotiate that in case that, that was something that would be a concern. The other thing is, is I want to make, the other, in crafting that motion, this idea of making sure that we, I know that the police department has needed something for so long, and I mean, I'm wanting to get them out of there as quickly as possible. And into a place that really is suitable, not only for them, but also just, you know, for overall health. So, I mean, and so that's the thing, I want to make sure, and I don't know, you know, what that looks like to directing the city staff. I think the RFP, you know, how you, do you direct the RFP now, or if it's a new RFP, or how are you going to do that? I mean, I think the motion would be to reject all proposals and then start over, but I don't know how that's going to, or if that's just the motion, if that's all that is, so.
What would that be, Jennifer?
Well, I think it's the consensus of, of the commission. It would have to be like, if you want to be more specific on the details of the RFP, and what those details.
It would be my recommendation that we take a workshop, or probably several more meetings to craft what might be, because while stepping back and taking a closer look are nice phrases, they're, they're not things that are actionable for staff. And so we would need to probably take the time, if you deny both proposals and provide further direction that you want us to bring back, you know, another request for proposal, or what processes might be available to you, we could probably take a workshop or an agenda item to figure that out. I don't know that you'd have to nail that down today necessarily.
Maybe do like a pre, pre-meeting type of thing with.
Yeah, because we're definitely going to need more direction to better understand what didn't meet expectations in the RFP that we used, notwithstanding you didn't find a proposal that you had enough confidence in moving forward with. And we'd need to probably vet the flexibility of the county agreement and that type of thing, so that the commission had as much information as possible.
So on that, is there a motion?
So is the motion to reject both proposals?
There is an emotion right now.
There's no emotion?
No, there's no motion. I'm saying, is that the motion?
Well, if you would, if you would like.
Want to make a motion on that?
I do want to keep in mind that if we reject these, then we can't consider them later.
That, that's not true. They can resubmit, if we had an RFP, they could resubmit, so that's.
If they choose to, yeah.
Right. But that doesn't mean that they're excluded or that they can't resubmit.
I'll make the motion that we deny both proposals and then provide further direction on, further direction on how to proceed with this item.
A second.
After, well, we'll have a, we'll have probably a workshop on this, but, and then we'll provide further direction as the governing body. There was a motion and a second. Commissioner Sessner and Commissioner Enro seconded. Any other discussion on that item before vote? All in favor, say aye then? Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Three, three, one vote.
I do want to say thank you to chief and all of the committee, and to the leadership leadership department from top to bottom. We are doing our best to make sure you guys get any home.
Okay, item 12C, correct?
Mm-hmm.
12C?
The mayor's not.
We'll let the mayor get back into.
Item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve year-end transfers from the general fund to the capital improvement reserve for selected 2024 programs, capital projects, and equipment purchases not completed by year's end.
City departments operate on an annual budget that is approved in September for the upcoming year. These budgets include projects, equipment, and program expenses which relate to those departments. If these expenditures are not completed in the current budget year, the funds set aside will become unanticipated cash carryover heading into the next year. Due to unforeseen circumstances, there are times when departments are unable to complete what has been set out for them nearly 18 months earlier. It is recognized that these projects, programs, and capital are an important part of the department's budget, so instead of waiting for another budget cycle, the commission has the opportunity each year to consider a transfer of the money to the capital improvement reserve fund. From here, it can be spent for its intended purpose in a subsequent year. The attached schedule of transfers is proposed for 2024. If there's any questions on any of those individual items, I'd be happy to answer them. But the alternatives before the governing bodies today are that the governing body may approve the transferring of funds from the cap, the current year to the capital improvement reserve as presented. The governing body may approve transferring the funds from the current year to the capital improvement reserve with modifications to what is presented, or the governing body may not approve the transfer of the funds. Staff recommends the governing body approve transferring from the current year to the capital improvement reserve as presented. And as a fiscal note, the 2024 transfer total from the general fund will be $529,950. Happy to answer any questions.
I move the approve the transferring of funds from the current year to the capital improvement reserve as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Item 12D, the governing body is asked to consider and determine the allocation of the social funding budget, but, or, of, yeah, the allocation of social funding between the community grant and the art grant for the 2025 year.
Good afternoon, Mayor and commissioners. The Community Health Advisory Board and Art Grant Committee are tasked to review grant applications and recommend award amounts from the social funding line item to the city commission. In recent years, a total of $46,500 was allocated to the social funding. Of the amount, $31,500, or 68%, was designed to, was designated to the community grant, while $15,000, or 32%, was awarded to the arts grant. For the 2025 budget year, the social funding allocation was reduced to $21,500, but the city commission did not specify how to divide the amount between the community and art grants. With the 2025 grant cycle approaching, CHAF has updated the community grant application with a brief summary of the changes listed in this memo. This includes adding a link to the city commission goals and adopted plans, adding new application questions, adding evaluation criteria, and a general formatting changes. Before finalizing and publishing the updated application, the city commission is asked to determine the portion of social funding, of, excuse me, of the social funding line item to allocate to the community grant. There are four alternatives in funding. The governing body may maintain the same proportions in previous years, allocating $14,550 to the community grant and $6,950 to the art grant. Two, the governing body may allocate the entire social funding line item, $21,500, to the community grant. Three, the governing body may keep the art grant flat at $15,000 and allocate the remaining $6,500 of the social funding line items to the community grant. Or four, the governing body may distribute the social funding line item in any other proportion between the art and community grants. Staff has no recommendation, and on a fiscal note, the city commission has already budgeted $21,500 in social funding 2025 fiscal year under the capital improvement division of the general fund. The Community Health Advisory Board and Art Grants will provide the city commission with award recommendations in early 2025, with no distribution decisions required at this time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you have a question, Commissioner?
Yeah, so, so does that, so it does, so on the community grant, does, I know that part of those grants are done by the city staff, is that correct? Or none of it is done by the city staff? So can you remind me how the grants are awarded? I've looked back through the thing and I lost it in here and I thought I had it.
So the Community Health Advisory Board makes the recommendations for the community grant.
Okay.
Then we have an arts grant board that makes recommendations for the arts grant. I think the application that you're referring to is the AFAC funding. That's the one that's slid into the two processes. City does a portion of it, and Livelife and the county does the other portion of it.
So, and, so this one affects which vote, so these dollars would be, so the AFAC dollars are not affected, they're going to come in separate?
Correct.
So this is just our portion? Okay. That's where I did get confused, and I should have asked earlier, but I didn't, so.
May I maintain the same, sorry?
Nope, go ahead.
We maintain the same proportions as in previous years, allocating $14,550 to the community grant and $6950 to the art grant.
I'll second.
So is the motion and a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Notion pass.
Thank you.
Item 12E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a future power supply option and direct staff to negotiate the final contract composure, components for governing body consideration at a subsequent meeting.
Good afternoon, Mayor and commissioners. Back on November 19th, 2024, excuse me, Mr. Paul Malburg, General Manager of the Kansas Municipal Energy Agency, KMEA, presented to the governing body a summary of the city of Garden City's current power supply portfolio and the future needs of Garden City. He covered new significant changes within the Southwest Power Pool, referred to as the SPP, as it focused on reliability after winter storm Uri occurred in 2021. Reserve margins for capacity are increasing during summer months, which used to be 12% and it increased by 15% in 2023, and now will increase to 16% in 2026. That's being done by the Southwest Power Pool. Winter reserves, which there didn't used to be a requirement for winter reserves, now has a winter reserve of 36% that'll go into effect in 2026. In addition, the SPP just approved $7.6 billion in new transmission projects in their entire footprint. These changes and significant low growth that the electric industry has not seen for decades, some of that low growth includes artificial intelligence, electric vehicles, data centers, crypto mining, all of that stuff combined, and the transition to renewable energy, retirement of older fuel, older fossil fuel generation are all adding to the cost of additional energy and capacity, which definitely impacts Garden City and every other electric user in the country. With the new reserve margins required by SPP, existing Garden City capacity agreements that will expire over the next two years, and two fixed energy agreements that represent most of Garden City's energy needs that will expire in 2030 and 2032, make it necessary for additional capacity and energy resources for the city of Garden City. So a variety of, variety of options were presented to the governing body on November 19th, 2024, and those included, option one was a large-scale solar power purchase agreement, BPA. This would be located in Pratt County, Kansas, require no upfront cash, would be for a 20-megawatt allocation with a 30-year commitment. This project would have a solar commercial rate, commercial operation date of January 1 of 2027, and it would cover a portion of the energy Garden City requires during on-peak hours and allows more purchasing of the lower energy on off-peak hours, which has historically been the lowest of all in the SPP footprint. This power purchase power agreement would also come with a 45% to 50% capacity rating of 20 megawatts, at no additional cost, and the transmission path for this product has been secured. Option number two was a product from the Grand River Dam, Grand River Dam Authority. This would be a nine-megawatt purchase power agreement with no upfront cash as well, with a 25-year commitment for a slice of Garden, for GRDA's total power supply system portfolio. So GRDA, they have natural gas, hydro, wind, solar, a little bit of everything, SPP market. This would be a baseload product, and it would be available, the energy would provide energy to us 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And it also has a secure transmission path. It's a cost-based system product that provides both long-term energy and capacity. And back in the presentation that was made on two weeks ago, you can see where the, our reserve margins that we need are increasing, we have to have more reserves. The other option from GRDA was a 15-megawatt purchase power agreement, and it's the same product as option number two, but will require a transmission study to ensure that the additional six megawatts of capacity can be transmitted from that source to Garden City. Option four that was covered was the option of looking into installing additional fossil fuel generation in Garden City. This would require the financing of the units, which for 20 megawatts is estimated at $20 million. Several different manufacturers are currently available, and several KMEA member cities have installed the three-megawatt CAT units, which are quick-start diesel units. However, procurement and installation currently take about three years, and Garden City would be required to choose a site for these generators, develop a connection path to the transmission system, and operate and maintain these units, similar to what we do with the Jameson Energy Center that has a current capacity of 27 megawatts. In addition to that, we covered the additional transmission costs to Garden City, which are projected to increase from 4.1 million in 2023 to 7.1 million in 2020, in 2030, or almost 10% per year. This is the cost to have power transmitted to Garden City via the high voltage transmission system. Some of those costs are related to the big expansion that SPP's putting in the transmission system and upgrades the local transmission providers are doing. The pricing options for options one, two, or three range from $45 to $60 per megawatt hour, whereas option four is estimated to be between $65 and $80 per megawatt hour. Coupled with the increasing transmission costs, and depending upon what options that Garden City may select, the projections are that the city of Garden City will see an increase of approximately, from approximately $19.1 million, which includes all of that service, to approximately $28.6 million in 2030. It should be noted that back in 2013, the city paid $22.7 million to another power provider under an all-re requirements contract. So we're edging up a little bit above what we were in 2013. As directed by the governing body, in 2022, a cost of service study was completed for the electric department, and a follow-up cost of service study is scheduled to take place in 2026. The projected impact on wholesale power supply costs will be factored into the 2026 cost of service study. And at the conclusion of the November 19th meeting, pre-meeting workshop, it was a consensus that the governing body took up that more closely at option one, which was the NextTerra Solar option, option two, the nine megawatts from GRDA, and option three, 15 megawatts for the most immediate purchase power needs. Covered a lot of information there. Your alternatives are, number one, the governing body may choose to direct staff to finalize negotiating the final contract components with NextTerra Solar and GRDA for nine megawatts. The governing body may choose, the second option, you may choose to direct staff to finalize these same contract components with NextTerra Solar and GRDA for 15 megawatts. Or the governing body may choose to direct staff to find other alternatives of any combination of options one through four identified in the background section of this memo. The recommendation is that staff recommends the governing body choose alternative one or alternative two. Staff believes it would be most advisable for the governing body to choose alternative one. This would allow staff time to determine transmission path congestion related to adding additional capacity offered in alternative two. And then on the fiscal note, depending upon what direction the governing body would provide to staff, the costs associated with future power supply costs and increases in the transmission services are going to increase about 5.5% annually, or $1.5 million, that'd be the impact to the, our wholesale power costs. And I'm more than happy to cover, try to cover any questions you may have on any of that.
So if we choose the nine megawatt, and after the cost of, that cost of service study in 2026 indicates that we need additional, would you have to negotiate a new contract for the additional, or, and then we just keep the nine, and then you just have to negotiate additional contract?
Yeah, if, if you just chose the nine megawatts now, and you wanted to go later, whether after that cost of service or even before, we would have, we'd have to negotiate another contract with GRDA for that additional capacity, or other providers at the same time, so. The cost of service that would be done in 2026 actually takes all of the information in the year 2025. So this next year, 2025, with empirical services, empirical food speed online, all of that data will be provided in that new cost of service. Now, there are no question, costs are going to increase, but in the last cost of service we did, there's still two smaller ranges. we did, there's still two smaller rate increases that's going to occur in 2025 and 2026, because we projected some of that cost at that time. So whatever the commission would desire to choose, when we do that 2026 cost of service, it'll definitely reflect any future power supply that you may want to try to do at that time.
So with the anticipation that EFI is coming online on 2025, you said?
Yeah, empirical clues will come online hopefully in the next, in the first quarter of 2025.
You know, I really want the 15-megawatts, just with the growth of the community and everything, but in the presentation, I understand the limitations of the transmission, and I understand why you're suggesting and recommending us go with alternative one. I, I just want us to keep, for me, I want us to keep the eye on the ball on that 15-megawatts just because of what you talked about earlier, all of the, you know, how we keep needing more power, power consumption, especially as our community continues to grow, we need to keep our eye on that, that ball, but I would, I would go with the 9-megawatts and then hopefully look at getting to that 15-megawatt.
And the terms on both those were the same, right? With a 9-megawatt versus a 15-megawatt?
Yeah, the only difference is the transmission path.
Yeah.
Which there's still, there's some, they're, they're looking into that. I mean, they're adding, that's what we have to look at to figure out how to get that to us is the thing, right? For the 15.
Yes.
And that's part of that $7.6 billion, okay. Yep. I move that we choose and to direct staff to finalize negotiation, negotiating final contract components with NextTerra Solar and GRDA for 9-megawatts.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion, pass.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Item 12F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve appointments to the Airport Advisory Board.
Good afternoon. We have Jett DeSalvo that has served on our board for multiple years. She has completed her first term of the advisory board, and she would like to serve a second term. We also have another opening from Charlie Robinson. Charlie has served on our board for a very long term, and throughout, thanks to the City Commission giving waivers to our advisory boards members so they could stay on the board during our construction and design and planning of the terminal, we appreciate that. Charlie has served his time and appreciates his time, but he's willing to step off of the board because we did have nine applicants that have been included in the information that are interested. The advisory board met in November and discussed the member applications, as well as Jett's desire to renew for a second term. And they recommended, via City Commission, reappoint Jett DeSalvo for a second term, as well as appointing Travis Nading for the first term, starting in January of 2025.
That was exciting that you had nine applicants. That was amazing. And all of them are really great applicants.
Yeah, it was a hard decision.
Yeah, I can imagine.
To review all of them and make a recommendation.
Mayor, I make the motion we approve the appointees as presented by the Airport Advisory Board.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion, pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12G is an executive session, and we don't anticipate any action after that executive session, so with that, if we can move to the agenda item, if there aren't any items on there that you'd like to pull off and consider separately, the appropriate motion would be to approve items 13A through 13J.
Mayor, I move that we approve items 13A through 13J.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion, pass. Okay, we'll go ahead and go into the Commissioner reports. First up will be Commissioner Andrew.
So hopefully everybody had a really great Thanksgiving. You had some time with family and friends, and also a lot of food, or not too much food, but it was, it was a really a nice break. And I went, I did a little bit of Black Friday, not the early morning Black Friday shopping, but I had some people who told me about how they were walking out with carts of stuff, so that was exciting. I did go out to a couple, several stores, and I mean, they were packed. And lots of the people they were packed with are from out of town, so that was really exciting. I'm hoping in that the tax receipts from this year are going to be even greater, and so that's exciting. I also appreciate all of the things that we were able to do from just the increases in the sales tax, you know, and allowing us to do, you know, things that we didn't anticipate but were able to do and needed to be done. I really appreciate the discussion on the new Garden City Police Department headquarters, and I'm really, I know that it's a tough decision, and I'm wanting to make sure that we really honor our police department. I mean, it's been a long time coming, and so we made the hard decision, and now it's time to really dig in and do the work, and so I'm excited for that discussion. The other thing I wanted just to bring up, I was thinking about, I know that the county is thinking about, well, they're going to be building their new, their new health center, their Fannie County Health Department, on the corner of Eighth and Mary Street. I have to think about that. After looking at all of the maps today, I was like, do we even need to know the names of streets anymore? But of Mary and Eighth, and I thought it was really interesting, you know, there's that park there, and it doesn't, it has a, it doesn't have a, it's not named, it's just a, just kind of a temporary name, but, you know, I was thinking back, and as I was walking in that park this weekend a couple of times with my, with my dogs, and then thinking about how many people were coming through there, and thinking about maybe an opportunity to name that for La Vida Rollman. I can't remember what the name of the park is on the corner of, it's, it's not, is it Forest Long Park?
Forest Park Lake.
Forest Park Lake, I'm sorry. And I don't know if that's possible, but I thought about, once at the Health Department, because I know that that is a really busy place, serves a lot of people, and hopefully that there's, I mean, I know there's already a path to that park, but I mean, it was a park I thought about, would this be a place that we could honor her? And so, anyway, just a consideration, something to think about, so. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Andrew. Next, Commissioner Cessna.
Just wanted to mention that today is match day. That goes until seven o'clock this evening, so really great event in our community, Giving Tuesday. Last year, they raised close to a million dollars. Hopefully that'll be over a million, but thank you for everyone that does contribute throughout the year, but especially to this event. It helps a huge number of organizations, help our community continue to succeed and move forward. Great pre-meeting presentation this morning, and I just want to congratulate the years of service to our staff that have served 10, 20, 30, up to 40 years. So congratulations to all them. Final kind of thought, you know, we were having this discussion about the Police Department, but it might not hurt, I mean, we do it, but it might not hurt to get a meeting with the county, just to go over county commission, to visit with them, probably get their thoughts more, a little bit more in-depth on the Law Enforcement Center, kind of get a little better focus on that, but also maybe follow up with them on, we just approved the NDS Agreement, the Neighborhood and Service Development Agreement, just to make sure every, you know, we're all on the same page with that. You know, just the continued growth of Garden City, and then maybe look, you know, there, look at, you know, hey, fire station number three is going to be coming online, how we'll be moving the fire station, as well as EMS into that, that department, just to make sure we're all, we're all on the same page with that. So, a part of the EMS into that, but just maybe kind of some of those topics, but maybe check with them and see if they have any others, but maybe first part of the year, get, get with them and, and get some input on, on that. I was, I was thinking about that as well. Other than that, I, I hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving, and, yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, Commissioner Landgraf.
So I just want to repeat on the pre-meeting, I thought it was really great being able to see that technology in person, and also being able to see the, like, the cellphone technology, as well, so that way police and fire department have access to being able to see that information as well. Then also just wanted to know, it was great being able to be part of our, being able to go to the Crystal Apple banquet, being able to honor those teachers who are awarded. And it was really nice being able to see all of the commissioners there in person to be able to honor education as well.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Next, Commissioner Nguyen.
Yeah, first, congratulations to the many employees for their milestones, working and serving our community. Thank you for your dedication. I was also honored to attend the Kristoppa Award Ceremony. Congratulations to Mrs. Allehand. She was here today, actually. Mr. Glass receiving the Kristoppa Awards from our district. Mr. Glass was my high school chemistry, chemistry teacher, so it was a joy to see him receive a very well-deserved honor. And then a couple Saturdays ago, I joined a couple high schoolers, Maggie, George, Taryn, Kyler, to go and help pull weeds and clean my backyard. It was 8:00 AM, freezing cold, 25 degrees, on their Saturday off. So it was a lot of fun to see their excitement and our work, and to see them love the people in our backyards. I think it's, it's necessary to say that service doesn't have to be across the world, doesn't have to be in Puerto Rico or Guatemala, and it leaves a much more tangible and resounding impact if we start in our own backyards. Then yesterday, I attended the Commissioner holiday chili lunch with a few commissioners here and then other leaders in our community. The work of the Fannie County Stork Museum helps us understand the story of Southwest Kansas and also promotes an excitement to shape the history of today. And also, happy birthday to our Parks and Rec Director, Tisha Hurd. So if you see her around today, wish her a happy birthday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Nguyen.
Part of the official record now.
On your birthday, even, that's right.
28, 21.
Happy 28th birthday.
That's right, that's right. And holding, right?
Okay. Yeah, I won't mention repeats, but yeah, kudos to everyone that had awards today, and it's great achievement, and it just shows the commitment that they have with the city and what a great atmosphere that the city offers for them to work in. I'll just kind of mention a couple of things that I had here that didn't get mentioned. Katie Guthrie Day was November 30th, so that was a good event that I attended and was a surprise to her for that achievement, and I believe you guys mentioned everything else, the chili feed, Crystal Apple event, a couple, an update for the fire station number three, they are 100% complete with the tile on the floor and the tile on the wall, so if, it's moving pretty fast, so they're doing a great job out there with that. So if you want to tour, get with Chief Ursick, and he'll, you know, get you out there and show you through that process. One other thing I noticed, just kind of like to mention as far as things going on in Garden City are the, the lights, you know, great opportunity to kind of just go out into the community. I got my lights up just after Thanksgiving, because I like to have Thanksgiving first and then Christmas, so my kids don't like me for that, but that's just my, you know, it's, it's just what I do. I can't put up lights before Thanksgiving, sorry. So, but just, yeah, go around town, appreciate the, the lights that everyone's putting up. What a wonderful holiday. Christmas tree lighting is coming this Friday, so if you, you know, want to dress warm, come out. I think they're still looking for that light switch for me to flip on, so if you know where it's at, let me know ASAP, because I don't want to be over there franticing about how to hit, you know, how to turn the lights on for everyone, so. But yeah, if you do, just come on out that Saturday, or Friday, and have a wonderful time, so that's all I have. So thank you, everybody.
I think the executive session, Mayor and Commissioners, listed as item 12G.
Staff requests you consider an executive session pursuant to KSA 75-4319B6 pertaining to preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property. And I think that could be done in 10 minutes, and Jennifer and myself, or are you okay in it?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I move that we consider an executive session pursuant to KSA 75-4319B6 pertaining to preliminary discussions related to the acquisition of real property for 10 minutes to include City Manager Matt Allen and City Attorney Jennifer Cunningham. Starting at 2:25, unless someone needs a break.
Lasting for?
10 minutes.
10 minutes.
Unless someone needs a break.
2:35.
Okay, is there a motion?
Second, sorry.
All right. Has been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion, pass.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.